Yes, I'll sign you. I love it. Signature first, I'll screw it up.
This is, let me see if I've got my paperwork here. This is Tuesday, August 20th, 2024, and it's now 6:15. This meeting will be conducted in person in the Sanford City Council chambers and via remote video and teleconference pursuant to one MRS A, Section 403B, 2D, and Section 6 of the Sanford City Council Rules of Procedure as amended and adopted February 6, 2024. Members of the public may join the meeting in person or remotely using the information posted on the meeting calendar on the city's website. Members of the public may also submit comments via the website under government slash city council slash contact the council. And would you please join me for a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And for our moment of silence, we have some sad news that we learned that Mo Payer passed away Saturday, August 10th. He was the airport maintenance supervisor for 43 years and before he retiring in 2015. So during the moment of silence, if you could just think of him, we'd appreciate it. Thank you. And now for roll call. Deputy Mayor Hurley.
President.
Counselor Stackpole.
President.
Counsel Hanselman.
Present.
Counsel Martell.
Present.
Counsel Trunchmontane.
Present.
Counsel Hitchcock.
Present.
And I am Mayor Brink, also present, as the city manager Steve Buck and executive administrator Larissa Ricketts. And I've got some corrections for the minutes. The minutes for the August 6, 2024. So the first one is, and more, I believe you're going to email the correction to Larissa under the mayor's report. I wanted everything about the consolidation to be in that report. So all the slides that I showed will have all that within the report, which it isn't there now. Also, we had some corrections that needed to be made of the numbers that were on the report. And so 20, 279, 09, that one is incorrect. It's 24, 310 dash 01. And under consent agenda, 24, 270 dash 01 is 24, 293 dash 01. And let's keep going. And under, this would be old business, 24, 297 dash 01 is 23, 474 dash 01. And one last correction, and that is under, let's see, which one is this? This is under new business. And 24, it was 312 dash 01 is 24, 314 dash 1. So I believe we got all those corrections. So now may I have a motion to approve those minutes unless somebody else has some corrections. Maura?
I'll make, I'll approve with the additional information being added into the minutes and the corrections that you made.
Okay, thank you.
I would like to request that the letter received from Representative, from Senator Harrington be included in those minutes.
Is that something we normally do?
The one I started to read into the.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I think it came by, did it come by an email so we can slide it right in?
Yes.
Okay. Good. And let's, so all those in favor?
Did you second it? I don't think we had a second.
Say that again. Oh, we need.
Was there an objection to doing that?
No, there's no objection, so.
I think we expected Jonathan to second.
Oh, I did expect you. So Jonathan, can you second?
I'll second, although I think I made the motion.
Perfect. Thank you. All those in favor? Thank you very much. Okay, in order to approve the minutes from the executive session, the city council held on August 6, 2024, can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, a second? Jonathan? Thank you, all those in favor? Perfect. And now for the mayor's report. And my report could be a little long. So you may have seen a discussion about the new fire station finances at the last city council meeting or on Facebook posts last week. If not, here are the details. If approved in 2024, the cost to construction two new fire stations will be $42.5 million. The headquarters station will be located in South Sanford on the old Springvale nursery site, and the Springvale station will be situated on the current Notre Dame church location in Springvale. For a home, now this will be towards the taxpayers, you'll understand what it might mean to you. A home valued at $300,000, the average annual impact would be for the year $238.42 or $4.58 per week. If we delay this project by five years, the annual cost would increase to $276.95 or $5.32 per week, reflecting a 34.32% increase, which is why we know we're going to be made to do it at some point, and that's why we don't want to keep waiting. This escalation is due to the rising labor and construction costs and has been calculated by our engineering firm using data from commercial and industrial projects in our region. These figures are intended to provide a clear picture of cost implications of delaying constructions, not to intimidate or scare residents. So just so you have a clear picture of what decisions would be for yes or no vote. The new fire stations are crucial for improving our community's safety and response capabilities. We understand that financial concerns are important, and the city of Sanford has a strong history of responsible financial management, avoiding overuse of bonding. This approach will continue to guide us through this project. There will be a five-year bump in property taxes from 2026 to 2031, but the council is considering options to mitigate this, such as reducing roadway, which the CIP, adjusting timing of other capital projects, and exploring alternative funding, such as grants or other things that are out there. We encourage all residents to stay informed and participate in the upcoming discussions and decisions regarding the important project. For more information, including financial graphs and detailed project data, please visit, and I'm going to say this really slow because I'm really terrible at all looking for stuff on the internet. So it would be www.sanfordmainconnex.com, and the Maine is just M-E, slash new-fire-station, fire-stations. So hopefully, everybody got that. It will be in the minutes, so if people want to look up that, they can. All right, the next part of my report, if you could all take a copy and pass that down, please. You'll notice I typically try not to talk a whole lot, but tonight is an exception. I've noticed that the closer we get to election time and the stresses of kids going back to school and all the holidays coming up, sometimes we lose sight of what our role is. So I'm going to share with you what the role of the city council and where we get all of our information from. So we have several things that we have to follow. The biggest thing is our charter. The next thing is the city council rules of and order of business. So that's something we have to do. What I'm going to refer to tonight is our code of conduct. That is basically how the council members agree to adhere to the following code of conduct during all city council meetings while representing the city council on any committee or subcommittee and while representing the city council in the greater Sanford and Springvale area. So the first one, and I will point out that every year we sign this, that we have all agreed that this is how we are going to behave in all of our meetings and how we are going to behave in public. A city councillor will always treat a fellow councillor with the respect he or she would expect to receive in return. Number two, a city council will always address a citizen, employee, fellow committee members, and fellow councillors with respect. Number three, a city councillor will not make accusatory or disparaging remarks towards or about citizens, employees, fellow committee members, and fellow councillors in or out of city council or committee meetings. Number four, a city council will remember at all times that as an individual, he or she has no legal authority outside the meetings of the city council, and that he or she shall conduct relationships with the city staff and local citizenry in all mediums of communication, including any and all social media, on the basis of this fact. So that's what we all have to remember. We're really just a citizen outside of this meeting. Number five, except for the purpose of inquiry and investigation under Sections 205.10 of the city charter, a city councillor may not give directions to a city staff but must make all requests through the city manager's office with the full knowledge of the mayor. This section is not intended to prevent a city council from seeking information from a staff member, whether verbally or in writing. So let me make this clear. If the city council has something that they are upset about or a citizen has spoken to them, they go through either Steve and myself. So they have to make me aware that it's going on, and they also go to Steve. And then Steve will either through Larissa or whatever, then contact that staff member. We, as councillors, do not have any authority at all. In fact, Steve is really our only employee. So we have to always remember that. We can't tell any staff member what to do. That's probably a pretty good relief, isn't it? Number six, a city council will listen to all citizens but will refer all complaints to the proper authorities and will discuss such complaints only at a meeting after failure of an administrative solution. So in other words, if there's a problem out there, we need to bring it to Steve and myself, and if we can't solve it, then they may say, would you put it on the agenda? A city councillor will support a decision, this is a tough one. A city council will support a decision graciously once it has been made by the majority of the city council. This rule shall not be construed to limit any member of the Sanford Council First Amendment rights as guaranteed under the U.S. Constitution. So what that means is when we vote on something here, even though, you know, I might vote against something and everybody else voted for it, I have to be very respectful of my fellow councillors and be at peace with what they have said. I can't be a bad loser, in other words, and try to keep carrying it on. Number eight, a city councillor will not criticize employees or fellow city councillors publicly but will make such criticism directly to the mayor, who will investigate council-related concerns and takes actions if necessary, and will bring employee-related concerns to the city manager for investigation and actions if necessary. And I tell you, Steve and I talk at least once or twice a week, and we meet almost every week. So if I get information, we, I share it immediately with Steve, and he takes care of it. A city council will make decisions only after all the facts bearing on the question has been presented and discussed, which is why we have subcommittees to gather information, and we always have three councillors on all those subcommittees, and then we bring it forth here, and this council will discuss the issue. And so you'll hear sometimes, you know, we're not all part of subcommittee, so we haven't heard all the information, but we have to trust the three people who are on that subcommittee to bring forth that information, which is why after my report, I'll be asking for subcommittee reports. A city council will not discuss the confidential business of the city council in the home, on the street, in the office, or the place for such discussions being is in this city council meeting. That's where we discuss city council business. Number 11, a city council represents that all electronic trans, I'll get this word wrong, transmittable sent or received in the performance of their duties as a city councillor is subject to Freedom of Information Act, in which some people might know that term is FOIA. Number 12, and the final one, a city councillor shall endeavor at all times to work for the benefit of the citizens of Sanford. So let me explain. When we vote on stuff and say it went the way I vote, it was positive, I don't win. The city wins. That's our whole goal when we vote on something, is to consider, is this what's best for the city? Not what's best for me, not what's best for my friends, but the whole city. And sometimes that's hard, which is why we have seven councillors. We all have different backgrounds, which actually adds to the fact that most of the time, we come up with the right decision because we're so diverse, and that does help. Okay, that is the end of my report. And now for the subcommittees. Do we have any subcommittee reports? Maura?
I'll start with zoning. Does that sound good? Zoning Subcommittee met, and it was Counselor Stackpole, the mayor, and myself this week. We discussed two significant topics, the first being the changes that the state of Maine has made to the marijuana laws within our state. The state of Maine recently passed legislation that has made marijuana offices no longer an option for medical caregivers to distribute their product to their patients. As councillors may recall, the office designation was a way of allowing patients to obtain the medical marijuana product at the site of the production without having to meet caregivers in parking lots or other locations. Sanford does not allow for medical retail stores and has maintained the eight marijuana locations for all marijuana activities, but only if the underlying zone allows for the activity. There are currently three of the eight marijuana locations that can grow and manufacture, but the underlying zone does not allow for retail sales within the zone. Without the previously allowed office option, these particular locations will not have an option to meet with clients on site. The zoning Subcommittee will be looking at various options for the medical growers, keeping in mind the underlying zoning. The current comprehensive plan process will also be factored into the conversation as changes to zoning may come from that process. So we're going to be further discussing it at our next meeting on the 10th of September. I just want to let everybody know that. And then, of course, we had a discussion of chickens, because why wouldn't we? So we have a few chicken situations in the community, and Jamie let us know it's somewhat getting worse as people are complaining about neighbors' chickens, and, you know, people aren't following the law regarding chickens, and we have rat issues because of the chickens. So it just comes down to, you have a conversation going on about what's the right for food in the main constitution, what does that mean? And I think it's, we all know that eventually, there's going to be a legal opinion on it. Ultimately, we also know that zoning was put in place in order to manage health and safety way back in the day so that you couldn't have, you know, pig styres and cows and creating health hazards for people in tight neighborhoods. So as we can see, it's an issue today as we deal with chickens because of the rat population that is attracted to the chickens. So anyway, so we discussed that. I think that's just going to be an ongoing conversation and not sure exactly what steps we're going to take moving forward, but we are aware of some of the issues that the codes enforcement office is managing right now. So that's zoning.
All right, thank you, Bob.
Your solid waste, you'd meet last Tuesday. We discussed the ongoing contracts coming up soon, year or two. Steve, when are our current contracts going to expire? Next year or?
June 31st of 2025.
Okay. So, yeah, so we're currently in negotiations with different vendors, looking at all our different options, looking at pricing. We're trying to make it better, I think, is the overall goal, but at the same time, we have to make it affordable, and we're not losing track of that option. But again, we would like to see possibly through this opportunity that we can, we can make the system better. So we'll see where we end up with that. It's going to be a long process. We're a long ways off. I think I said this before, last time this was on the agenda, we're still a ways off from coming up with any kind of, even just a firm number, never mind a hard number on all this stuff. Also, we discussed the success of the hazardous waste day that we had up the Sanford Station, and that went very well. There was a lot of activity. People didn't complain too much about the price of things, and we took in and got rid of, our community, our citizens got rid of a lot of stuff. So because that was a success, we're looking to run that again. This was not on the best day of the week, which is another part in looking at the success of this day. So we're trying to bring the company back in on a Saturday. That's a more convenient day for the people in Sanford and Springvale to get up there and do the stuff.
Was it on Father's Day?
It was on Sunday. It was on a Sunday.
I know it was on a Sunday. For some reason, I thought it was.
I don't think it was Father's Day.
No, it wasn't? I thought it'd be appropriate on one Father's Day.
And just worth mentioning, we spoke, this whole thing started because we were talking about disposal of marijuana devices, cartridges, vape cartridges, things like that. And what came out of the meeting was that no one brought any vape cartridges or devices or batteries or anything to that. It's still an option, obviously, but no one partook of that option. So I think that issue is still hanging out there, and we'll look at various means. They'll be voluntary, but we'll look at various means to address that issue.
Anne?
All right, so I was, I get two reports. One is the Municipal Operations and Property Subcommittee, which the mayor, deputy mayor, and myself attended last week. We had some robust discussion around the updating the lease agreement between the city and the Sanford-Springvale Development Corporation for the Anderson Learning Building in Springvale. There was discussion regarding capital improvements in which entities should pay for those types of improvements, discussion of a possible CIP fund for the SSDC, and discussion around the SSDC's continued mission of leasing space to tenants that generally benefits the community. So Steve is going to bring that conversation back to the SSDC board and continue work on that lease to bring it back to us again. We also had a really great presentation or discussion from Jamie Cole, who brought to our attention a recent 911 issue related to duplicate street names here in our community. And he asked for consensus on moving forward with updating streets here in Sanford to eliminate duplicate street names, especially now that after some recent redistricting with our fire stations, we'll have similar street names within one district area, which is making it a little bit worse. So there was just agreement or consensus at the subcommittee level that that work should happen at this point in time because of the safety needs to move it forward, in spite of some inconveniences that it causes and will do as a community. Jamie shared some of the steps that his offices takes to help reduce inconvenience to the community in terms of notifications and steps and so forth. The other items from the Municipal Operations Subcommittee will actually be on tonight's agenda, so we'll talk about that later. In addition, I had the pleasure of attending the Public Safety Subcommittee meeting with the mayor and deputy mayor this week. Dispatch gave us a fun update in terms of what they have had going on. And in exciting news, Megan Welsh was one of, I think, 40 attendees that went to the NENA conference. She had a really great experience and brought some good information back to our dispatch center. Also exciting news, our dispatch center continues to stay really well-staffed. We currently have one vacancy, but we have trainees, and it's really commendable that that's the case because not too long ago, we were short-staffed like so many other dispatch centers are here in the state of Maine.
We also had a really great presentation or discussion from Jamie Cole, who brought to our attention a recent 911 issue related to duplicate street names here in our community. And he asked for consensus on moving forward with updating streets here in Sanford to eliminate duplicate street names, especially now that after some recent redistricting with our fire stations, we'll have similar street names within one district area, which is making it a little bit worse. So, there was just agreement or consensus at the Subcommittee level that that work should happen at this point in time because of the safety needs to move it forward, in spite of some inconveniences that it causes. And we'll do as a community, Jamie shared some of the steps that his offices takes to help reduce inconvenience to the community in terms of notifications and steps and so forth. The other items from the Municipal Operations Subcommittee will actually be on tonight's agenda, so we'll talk about that later. In addition, I had the pleasure of attending the Public Safety Subcommittee meeting with the Mayor and Deputy Mayor this week. Dispatch gave us a fun update in terms of what they have had going on. And in exciting news, Megan Welsh was one of, I think, 40 attendees that went to the NENA Conference. She had a really great experience and brought some good information back to our Dispatch Center. Also exciting news, our Dispatch Center continues to stay really well-staffed. We currently have one vacancy, but we have trainees, and it's really commendable that that's the case, because not too long ago, we were short-staffed, like so many other Dispatch Centers are here in the state of Maine. The last thing on Dispatch that is that the CAD RFP was officially approved for release by the County Commissioners. As a reminder, the CAD RFP, which we're doing countywide, will hopefully allow us for some better funding options, grant opportunities, reduce our local cost. And I made the point at the Subcommittee meeting that the timing of our investment in our CAD, which is necessary and important, will correspond with our potential bump with our fire station bonds. So, just something to keep in mind as we move forward. And then, we heard from the Sanford Fire and EMS Department. I have to get used to saying that. They reported in the month of June, or excuse me, year-to-date, so for the first six months of the year, they've responded to 2,400 incidents. Seventy-six percent of incidents in the month of June were EMS-related, so the majority of their incidents are continuing to be EMS-related. They also really shared a great presentation I wish I had seen earlier, honestly, in regards to their command vehicles. And I think that A.C. Smith referred to it as a rolling multi-tool, but some great pictures on what a command vehicle actually looks like, the equipment in it, the benefit to our community to have those. And it was so beneficial, the Mayor requested that that be presented to the full council at some point, so we could understand better, when we're talking about command vehicles, what that really means to our Fire and EMS Department. The Sanford Police Department was really busy last Tuesday, preparing for National Night Out and other things, but we got to hear from Katie, and she shared just a reminder about National Night Out. I heard it was a great success. I wasn't able to attend. I did give plugs for the dunk tank. I don't know how that went, so I'll be interested to hear that, but it was a great presentation from her. And then, Public Works was there, but all those items will be on tonight's agenda. Thank you.
That was a very fun night. And it was, I think each and every year, and Eric, I might be wrong, but it, oh, Eric, I can't even look at you without thinking about the outfit that you guys wore. They wore these bright yellow t-shirts, which were very long, and then they had these green and yellow knee-high socks that they wore. So, I really felt sorry for you guys, but it really, you knew who the staff was.
They only looked good on Colleen.
They did look good on Colleen. They did. It was, it was, it was, did any of you guys get to go in the audience? No? Oh, great hamburgers, great hot dogs, they had cotton candy there, they had Kona, the ice stuff that you get to put your own flavors on and stuff, and all that's free. And they had the Control Officer for the animals was here also, and they gave away harnesses and stuff for the dogs, and they gave collars away, and it's just a fun time. And I, there were, there are hundreds of people that come to them. It was just amazing. The big trucks were there, the fire trucks and Chancellors, that huge tow truck was there with the biggest flag I have ever seen, you know, hanging off it. So, it was just amazing. So, put it on for next year, guys, because you really missed something. I think you would have a lot of fun.
But Mayor, who did the dunk take?
I don't, I think it was just the police officers did the dunk take, yeah. And they didn't allow Pete to man that this year, because he was a little aggressive last year, right Pete?
Madam Mayor, the PD was a little soft on the dunk take this year.
Next, Pete, your report.
Okay. I chair the Subcommittee for the Fire Station Feasibility Group. So, as part of our ongoing efforts to keep the community informed about the proposed new fire stations, I want to let you know where you can find detailed resources about the project. These resources include comprehensive information on the new stations, covering financial impacts, design plans, and benefits of enhanced emergency services. If you're on Facebook, this is useful. You can see many of the educational posts on the fire station, including a video on the Fire Department and the city's Facebook pages. If you're not on Facebook, you can find all these videos on the city's YouTube channel at www.youtube@cityofsanfordmaine, and on Channel 26 for the public stations. The second video, which delves deeper into the need for a new station, and our third video focuses on firefighter cancer, will also be available on these platforms. Additionally, all videos and further resources can be accessed on Sanford Connect's project All right. And on the Connects Fire Station project page, you can find access, project information and updates. You frequently ask questions. Ask your own questions, because you're voting on this. Answer any poll questions, please. Review documents such as the Fire Department existing conditions, functional assessment. See the renderings and more. We're also looking at hosting fire station tours in a community forum to provide additional opportunities for you to learn more about the project and share your feedback. Be sure to follow us on Facebook for updates on these events and to stay informed about all the latest developments. Please share this information with your friends, neighbors, to help our community get engaged. Your input is valuable as we move forward with this important project. And it's only going to get costlier the longer we wait. So, there's my report on that. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Pete. And I have to, at the last meeting, when the Fire Chief spoke, we spoke about the cancer incidents among our firefighters. And I really feel that our firefighters come into our homes, they save our parents, our children, sometimes our animals, and maybe it's time we keep our firefighters safe. So, this is one way that we can keep our firefighters safe, so they have a clean environment, so that they don't get cancer. So, that's my big push for that. All right. Does anybody else have a Subcommittee report? Okay. And just to let everybody know, these are the major subcommittees that we have. We have a lot of other smaller committees that meet on a regular basis also, that make decisions for our city. So, it's not just these committees, but there'd be, there are so many committees, you know, like the Art Committee and the Cemetery Committee and stuff, that make the rules and address all that stuff. So, they're just committee after committee. So, in fact, Nate, you're even on another committee, too.
The Recreation Advisory Committee.
Yes.
Yes.
There are just many of them. So, if you're interested in being on any, I'm going to put a plug out for this, if you're interested in being on any of committees, go on our website, and they say all the other committees that are on there, and they'll let you know if there are openings. Typically, we'll start to fill those right after January, but if we already have some open spaces on there, you can apply now. So, we'd really appreciate having more citizens on these committees. All right. City Managers Report. Steve?
If you don't mind, I'm going to do the Homeless Report first, and then I'll do the Managers Report.
Sure.
So, the Homeless Task Force met again on August 19th. We meet twice per month. I'm just going to hit the major topics that the committee continues to work on. The first is community outreach workers. Main State Housing released a Notice of Financial Availability. It opened up on August 16th, under the Long-Term Solutions to Address Homelessness as authorized by the last legislative session. So, York County Shelter Program will, one of our premier partners in our address of homelessness, they will be the lead applicant competing for the Main State Housing Funds. An application was, the Shelter has also made an application to the Cohen Foundation, and they've been invited to submit their application for $50,000 to go towards a vehicle and other equipment for an outreach worker position or positions. So, they'll be asking us for letters of support to go towards that. The reason this is so important is, that's one of the missing links, is our mental health unit and our officers and our social workers have been that primary point of contact. This community outreach worker or workers will become that primary point of contact for those that are unhoused, making that connectivity in the diversionary programming and other resources that are available out in the field. And this is one of the most difficult positions to fill. So, PATH, for example, has two positions that are funded. They've only have one filled, and they've been trying unsuccessfully for quite a period of time to fill their second position. So, this would be a critical piece that will take some of the burden off on our mental health unit and allow them to focus on yellow flag laws, yellow flag law and other important aspects. Also, the Warming Center Funds, also Main State Housing opened up a NOFA on that as well. That opened up on July 19th. It closes by August 23rd. York County Shelter Program will be applying for funds. They have been looking for another commercial space here in close proximity to Sanford or in Sanford, and have been unable to locate that whereby they could have meals, case management, showers, and laundry. So, they're really looking at the use of the funds to take advantage of facilities that they already have there in Sanford, will accomplish the transportation, should they open up there. And the important part of being, having that at the shelter is, the meals, case management, showers, and laundry are all available there on-site, and we would be best coordinated. So, the committee continues to support that aspect.
And you met in Alfred, not Sanford.
In Alfred, I'm sorry.
Yes. Okay.
Our 19 Strategies, excuse me, the Sanford Housing Authority hosted a meeting with Nichelle, is it Nichelle? Nichelle?
Nichelle.
Nichelle Carver. She's the Senior Regional Advisor for the United States Interagency Council on Homelessness. Ms. Carver was most engaged in the regional approach and cooperative work of the varying agencies and the city staff that compiled and implemented the 19 Strategies here locally to address encampments and those that are unhoused. The Director will be providing access to resources such as federal continuum of care funds, so rather than having to go through the state and the county to access that, she believes that we can access that directly. That would assist the Shelter in closing the funding gap of current operations. There may also be federal funds available towards outreach workers as well, so that would be over and above the Main State Housing Funds that we're applying for. And the last indication was that that agency is doing further work on prevention and will provide further guidance and resources to us in the near future. So, by all accounts, it was a very productive meeting. I wasn't able to attend. I was over here dealing with the harm reduction program, but I'm very excited that they may be able to provide a link to additional federal assistance that we would not have gotten otherwise. Housing First, the site plan development and property purchases remain on track. Land purchase should be completed by early September, and this is the property of Inheritage There's also a proposed land swap with one of the Butters, and that, I received word today that that's being viewed very favorably, and their attorneys are working on the land swap as proposed. And what that land swap will do is it allows us to reconfigure the placement of the Housing First units, the 30 units, to ensure that there's no environmental constraints and that the associated access points and parking would be built on land that specifically does have environmental constraints, which opens up new funding opportunities for the associated infrastructure for the housing units. So, all of that is still well on track. Housing Assistance and Prevention, that's an important part, so as we try to transition from the overwhelming volume of unhoused people that we had at the start of the, this task force, we're now shifting to address those that are still unhoused, but also on the prevention side. So, Main State Housing has $18 million that is going into a pilot rent relief program. Main State Housing has just opened up the proposals for one of the, it's assumed that one of the community action corporations will take on and become the single point and administer the program on behalf of the state, so that our RFP is open. We don't know who that's going to be yet. And they have, but they have amended the program from a two-year program to a 12-month program, I believe, because of the limited resources. And it's almost horrible for me to say that $18 million is limited resources, but when you do the math, it would assist less than 1,000 people statewide. Funding will be focused on those that have 60% area median income and/or less, and their rents are, fall within the 125% or less area market rate. Qualified candidates will be eligible for up to $800 per month assistance. Priorities will be given to those people that their rents are in arrears and they're in danger of eviction. And then, remaining funds would be focused towards providing monthly rental gap financing. Two important public education elements that go to the advocacy side of what the task force works on. The first is the city's annual housing forum. I believe this would be the third, the third of the forums. We're looking at September 24th, here in the city council chambers at 6:00 PM. We'd run that as a hybrid meeting. We'd also would have people welcoming people to come in. We hear that sometimes people don't like to come to the council chambers as much as other locations, but this is the, one of two locations where we can produce hybrid meetings and broadcast. So, the public will be invited to attend and participate. Elements under development for the forum will be as much on education as it will be in reporting out the year's actions. Areas that we discussed at this last meeting was, we've had a market analysis done. We have the preliminary data from that, which talks to us about the existing housing stock, opportunities to meet the needs in varying housing stocks, rents, and trends in housing demographics, and future actions to address each of these areas. We'd also like to relate the work on the ALICE reporting, that's the Asset Limited Income Constrained Employed. That's the report that gives the benchmarks between what people make here in the region versus what it actually costs. It's very eye-opening, that about 42% of our population that lives and works in this region really can't afford to meet their daily needs for housing. We'd like to have our schools and student housing instability numbers and trends presented. We'd like to discuss LD, what we warm, warmly know as LD 2003, which was the state's first attempt at a statewide housing ordinances that look at densities. And we want to know if we're making, if the state is making any headways pursuant to that LD 2003, and we can relate what we've done here locally as far as densities are We talk about avenues such as the rent relief program as on the prevention side, heating and utilities assistance, and other financial guidance. And I think for the first time, we'd like to have the area agency on aging come in and talk to us about senior programs to assist in aging in place and other avenues, again on the prevention side. The second forum, which is the Homeless Forum, which we put that on for the first time last year. It was held at the Sanford Performing Arts Center, proposing to do that again this year, also at the Sanford Performing Arts Center. That will be held on November 13th. That's a Wednesday. We haven't set the time yet. I know last year, I believe we started that at 7:00 to allow people to have time for supper and such under that, but we can determine that. This will focus on the York County Legislative Group, which is a group of municipal managers and other staff throughout York County, will work to again identify top priorities and how best to communicate those to our elected officials. So, both the state representatives, who will be, some of which will be returning to Augusta after the November 5th election, and some will be newly elected, but just one week after that, we'll have this forum specifically to provide the top priorities for York County in addressing homelessness and prevention aspects, such that as seasoned and/or new legislators, they'll have the opportunity to take that information and perhaps sponsor legislation before the legislature date in mid-December, or if it's not known the specifics, they can at least get a placeholder put in place, simply get a title in there, hold that for us as we finish developing that out. Areas that we discussed as far as for this forum is information of what worked well or what did not work well over the past year, the impacts of past legislation from the last session. So, for example, I talked to you about two different NOFAs that just opened up from Main State Housing. That was from the last session. We're just seeing that now, you know, almost a year later. So, that delay is much of the discussion as well. Much is anticipated to pivot on the annual needs for critical services being funded ongoing and not just one-time funding. That's a message that we care to deliver. You have to battle every year, every year, every year. It should just be part of the annual budget for the state. Critical areas such as shelter funding, street outreach workers, bed capacities for substance use disorder and mental health, and private non-medical institution beds are all key components to address the chronically unhoused populations that we continue to see and address basitivism. So, I'll provide you with more information on what the Legislative Group is reporting out, what those priorities look like, so that we can round those out and get ready for the forum in November.
And you might have remembered this from last year, that we, when you entered the auditorium, we had posters and stuff that people were supposed to walk around and take a look at. That part wasn't as successful as we thought it was. So, we thought about keeping those doors- So we thought about keeping those doors closed, having the posters out in the hallway with possible desserts being served, and people go from poster to poster out there with the group who has the poster to ask questions of them and hoping to make it a little more fun and pointed so that they know exactly what they're supposed to do. Then after they do that a while, we open the doors and people can go in the auditorium for the presentations. So we're tweaking it, you know? We have to figure out what's the best dessert. Jonathan, you're gonna cook?
I'll bring something. No, I just wanted to comment. I think that's a great idea. I seem to recall last time, most of the posters were inside and kind of along the walls where people were kind of going back and forth. So I think that's a great idea and maybe also having coffee or something afterwards so people can stick around and chit chat a little bit, because I know before people might be coming from work and just trying to trickle in. But no, that's great. Glad we're talking about doing this again.
Good, thank you. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, on the manager's report, the first item is a petition to overturn council actions. On Monday, August nineteenth, a group of five Sanford voters filed as an overrule committee to start the petition process to overturn the city council's voted action on order number twenty-three dash four-seven-four dash zero-one, which was ordered to continue discussion and vote on consolidation of the three city wards to Sanford High School. A motion was made to consolidate all three city wards and voting locations to Sanford High School and Regional Technical Center located at one hundred Alumni Boulevard in Sanford, Maine. That motion was supported by a vote of five to two to consolidate to the new high school. Consolidation will take effect for the November fifth, twenty-twenty-four election. So there's been much questions as to fulfilling this process and what this looks like. So actions related to the filing and the implementation of the petition are found in City Code, chapter one oh five at all, as well as City Charter, specifically Article thirteen, Initiative and Referendum, which is section thirteen oh two. So the petition was filed within the required fourteen days of enactment of order number twenty-three dash four-seven-four dash zero-one. It was filed on day thirteenth pursuant to Code one oh five dash two B. However, the filing is not complete as the petition must contain the text of the ordinance resolution or order adopted by the council to be overturned. So they filed as the necessary people, but they did not file the text. The resulting referendum question will then be submitted once they file that. The question will be submitted by the city clerk for legal review, in a way different than any other referendum question. Once that legal review is complete, many times the attorney tweaks that, puts it into the form that it needs to be, makes sure that it's clear. Once approved, the blank petition forms with the referendum question will be issued to the overrule committee and that starts their clock ticking. The overall committee will then have thirty days upon issuance to obtain five percent of the registered voters of the city. Currently, that five percent would be of fifteen thousand nine hundred and twenty-four, which means they'd have to collect a minimum of seven hundred and ninety-seven signatures of Sanford registered voters, as could be affirmed. Each registered voter who signs a petition shall include a place of residence, providing either the street and number or a description sufficient to identify the place. Each petition shall have attached to it, when filed, with a city clerk and affidavit executed by the circulator of the petition stating that he or she personally circulated the attached petition, that it was at no time in the hands of any person other than the circulator, the number of signatures thereon, that all of the signatures were affixed in the circulator's presence, and that the circulator believes them to be the genuine signatures of the persons whose names they purport to be, and that each signer had an opportunity before signing to read the full text of the ordinance resolution order adopted by the council that they are seeking to overturn. Within ten days of the circulation period ends, the city clerk shall certify to the city council as to whether the petition has been signed by not less than five percent of the registered voters of the city. Should less than five percent of the registered voters of the city sign the petition, the petition shall have no further force or effect. If certified by the clerk that the five percent of the valid signatures are satisfied, the council shall call a public hearing to be held within thirty days of receipt of the city clerk's certification and so shall submit the ordinance resolution order to a referendum vote at the next regular election, at least thirty days after the close of the public hearing. The ordinance resolution order shall remain in effect during this period, so I highlighted that. The city clerk led me to believe that the petitioners believe that by filing for the blank forms and filing as the overrule committee, that that would somehow stay the council's execution of the voted order. That is not the case. So I knew that to be true. I also asked for a legal opinion and I have that from Phil Sossier at the legal council. He submitted that back to me today, affirming that it does not stay during this period. So an ordinance resolution order shall not be repealed unless a majority of those voting thereon shall have voted in the affirmative and provided that the total number of votes cast for and against equals or exceeds twenty-five percent of the total number of votes cast in Sanford in the last previous gubernatorial election. So the overall committee must now submit their desired text for the referendum vote to be submitted for legal review as the next step in their process, and we can assist them with that language if so needed. Timing, the process as set forth would not be completed in time for the November fifth, twenty-twenty-four election, and if completed at a later, at a later date, it would move it to the June twenty-twenty-five election as the next election date that the referendum question to overturn the council's voted action could take place.
All right, thank you, Steve. Any questions? Jonathan?
Steve, a point of clarification, the Charter, Section B, as part of the submission process, just indicates that the submission must be in writing, and then it talks about the clerk issuing petition blanks, and that those circulated petitions are required to have the complete text of the ordinance. It doesn't state that the complete text of the ordinance must be in the written request.
Correct. But the clerk can't issue the blank petitions without the text being on there. You can't ask somebody to sign a petition that does not have the text on the petition.
So the agenda item-
The committee, the committee needs to say what it is they're trying to overturn. We can assist them with that. Just filing that they want to take action on council order twenty-four dash four-seven-four is ambiguous. What are they looking to do? Is it to overturn that, that they want you to vote to overturn that action? If that's the case, we can assist them with writing that question.
Okay. Yeah, as far as I understand, no communication was returned to the requesters.
It was. David LaHoo turned in the petition. The clerk reached back out to the person who filed the petition.
Okay. All right, thank you.
That's why I took the time to put all of this in writing to document it, because I'm tired of FOAs. I've got two FOAs on this already for the council's voted action. I can't tell you what a time sink that is to process those metadata searches and such under that. So there it is. All right, MDOT Sanford project updates. The Route two oh two or Lebanon Street project is continuing at an accelerated pace. MDOT expressed thanks for the city. We gave them our sign boards to assist in notifying drivers on that passage. There still is a lot of work remain to be done. You should see cranes out there this week lifting the struts and or the culverts in place, so expect further traffic delays. Also, the intersection of Route four, School Street and Gable Road will have new poles being placed this week and curbing will follow. While those efforts might not be major delays, there will be traffic control necessary at that intersection. The paving, the wear course is tentatively scheduled for after Labor Day at this point. The paving is anticipated to result in major delays, but traffic control will be out there at that point in time. Director Hill noted that school will be back in session when the paving is being done, so he's asked MDOT to consider working with the primary contractor on that, to start and stop work in accordance with the school's schedule entering and coming from the school during that time period. Also wanted to make the public aware of the traffic lights. Under the build grant, MDOT and contractors continue to work on the completion, the complete replacement of the city's traffic lights at all of our intersections pursuant to the build grant award. Contractors have nearly completed the overhead light work and are now turning to the ADA crosswalk compliance improvements, which are tip downs and truncated domes. The truncated domes are those textured raised bumps that people with sight impairments can feel with their feet and sense with their canes. Further pedestrian crossing improvements are also going to be made this year under the Heads Up Safety Grant. The vendor that's been awarded that work has not been able to report to us yet, but the work shall be completed by this fall. The next item I have is the Assistant City Manager position. Pursuant to a broad search and interview process, a best candidate has been selected from a field of twenty-two candidates. The mayor and deputy mayor were part of the oral board process in the selection of the candidate. Candidate that's been extended an offer is Michelle Labrie. She has accepted the position and will start with the city on September ninth. Ms. Labrie has over twenty-two years in local government and currently serves as the Deputy County Administrator for Penobscot County with offices, with their offices in the city of Bangor. It's worth noting that in Penobscot County, there are budgets for services for the county such as jails, courts, registrar, emergency management, regional dispatch and the sheriff's departments, as we would be familiar with here in York County. But they also provide services to thirty-nine unorganized territories for all level of municipal services from education to road plowing, trash removal and such under that. Those thirty-nine unorganized territories lack formal incorporation and administrative offices to provide such services, therefore the county provides them in lieu thereof. And the last thing I have, the next to last thing I have is upcoming forums, the city's annual housing forum. I mentioned that in the homeless report, again, September twenty-fourth here in the council chambers. The fire station referendum question and answer forum is being proposed to hold that on October second at the Sanford Performing Arts Center. That forum is being designed to allow the public to receive a presentation on the fire stations and then to open the floor for questions and answers. The interactive format is anticipated to be a live version of the frequently asked questions and to help identify areas of yet to be answered questions that the Sanford voters may have. And then the last is the homeless forum for the state and local elected officials, and again, that's November thirteenth, also at the Performing Arts Center. And the last, last thing I have is the nomination papers for municipal offices has been reissued. There was a position that was missed. That missed position is one position for Sanford School Committee member to fill unexpired term beginning one-one twenty-twenty-five and ending twelve-thirty-one twenty-twenty-five. So for the calendar year of twenty-twenty-five, that position had been appointed last year, goes through the end of this year. That was, that was missed, so that's been added to the list. Papers are still open. They must be turned back in by September fourth. For the school committee position, they would have to have fifty signatures of Sanford registered voters and again turn those in by five-thirty P.M. on September fourth. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions, Steve? Ann?
Well, I have a really important question about the new Assistant City Manager. Is she related to Labrie's bakery?
Yes.
Really? That's so exciting.
Her husband, yes.
Wow, all right.
And I heard he likes to do cheesecake?
Her husband is a Labrie.
All right.
He has a full-time job, too.
So Steve, we have to get her a chair up here then, right? Because of the bakery?
Not just because of the bakery.
I'm just thinking Bismarcks. They were famous for their Bismarcks, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Jonathan?
Thank you. I don't know if we have any opportunity for feedback for the, some of the MDOT projects, but I had to drive to Rochester a couple of times over the weekend. I appreciate the signs that they have out. I think that's helpful. But the road kind of does this weird like twist thing and it's not, I think it'd be helpful to have some cones or something in the middle to kind of segregate out the sides because it's a little bit unclear in a few spots. So I don't know if we have an opportunity to do that, but I think something like that would be helpful because it's a little bit confusing.
Is there somebody he connects to with at the state or?
I'll communicate that to Matt Hill and Matt Hill will communicate it back over to them, so.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. And I do appreciate that they have been leaving it lit up at night. I think that's very helpful because they have quite the, quite the hole there. So a lot of work going on, but.
I echo that sentiment. I was like, I would, can't even imagine falling into that.
All right, good. And there's no communication or presentations and public participation will be next, and let me explain what that is. Public participation is always something that is not on our agenda that the people want to speak to. Usually they're given three minutes to speak. You come, the council does not make comments at public participation because we're only hearing one side. If it's something that we need to add to a subcommittee to get more information, then we add to that. Or it's something that we can just take up generally at another meeting, we do that. So it will be addressed, but not at this meeting. And let's see, people who speak at the public participation come up, they give their full name and their address. So I've got Mike Saban, and hopefully I said the last name correctly.
Hello, my name is Michael Saban and I'm actually not from Sanford, I'm from Waterboro.
Hold on, this is only for Sanford Springvale residents.
Regarding?
You cannot speak, only for Sanford Springvale residents. Thank you, those are the rules. I just have to follow the rules. So thank you for being willing to come. So don't tell me you've sat here all this time.
Absolutely.
Okay, I'm sorry. But yeah, you can't speak on that, on anything. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I wonder if we couldn't put that statement on the top of the sign-in sheet to prevent folks from?
Yep, that's a good idea, yeah.
Yeah.
Would someone else like to speak on this topic?
Is there anybody else that lives in Sanford Springvale that wants? Mike? Mike, is there anybody who here who lives in Sanford Springvale who would like to speak on your subject? Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, moving right along, no consent agenda, so we'll go right to old business. The order to approve proposed additions to Sanford, City of Sanford ordinance, chapter one oh seven, city property article one, use of city property subsection one oh seven dash two definitions, subsections one oh seven dash three prohibited, subsections one oh seven dash four enforcement and subsections one oh seven dash five violations and penalties. This item must be read on two occasions. This is the second reading. Is this you, Steve?
It is. So as the city council passed one oh seven dash one at the last, the last council meeting, it was the second read and that passed that section, the remainder of, of chapter one oh seven, which becomes a use of city-owned or acquired property under chapter one oh seven, first time establishment, provides four definitions for camp or camping, for indicia of camping, what indicates camping is taking place. It has a definition for storage and all of these elements are further addressed under one oh seven dash three. So for the first time, the city is looking at an ordinance that has specific prohibitions for camping with the definition as far as city property and in public open space to include public rights of way and appurtenances, city parks, unless permitted by designation of the city council. And it also gets into the same as far as storage is concerned. So there are a number of times, especially as winter approaches, where there are vehicles, trailers, campers, all sorts of materials that are stored within the public right of way, on the sides of the streets or partially in the street, partially off the street, but still within the city rights of way. That makes it very difficult for snow clearing and other activities. Section one oh seven dash- Section 107-4 provides for enforcement by our police department. So when a person causes or commits any of the conditions enumerated in 107-3 herein, sworn police officer may order the person to stop causing or committing such condition, collect their personal property and/or move and/or disperse. Any person who fails or refuses to obey such orders or prior warnings in violation of 107-3 are subject to the provisions of 107-5. That's section 105, 107-5 is violations of penalties. Violators are subject to removal from the property with, with their personal property and issued a criminal trespass notice. Repeat offenders are those who fail to pay the penalties in accordance with this article may be issued a criminal trespass notice for one full year. Civil penalties shall be imposed through the issuance of a citation with a fine not to exceed $100. This has been a long time in the works. We held off specifically on the development of this, waiting for the outcome of the Supreme Court ruling, which was the Grants Pass versus, Grants Pass, Oregon versus Johnson, which affirmed that the city is not in violation of our constitution by having such ordinance in place.
Thank you. Can I have a motion, please? Ann?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposed additions to City of Sanford ordinance, Chapter 107.
May I have a second, please? Pete?
I'll second that.
And is there any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Okay, moving right along, under new business. Resolve to send the referendum vote for the November 5th, 2024 election, a $42.5 million bond package for the purpose of engineering and construction and other costs related heretofore of two new fire and rescue stations pursuant to Chapter Section 604.4 and 705. And are you speaking to this too, Steve?
I will. So this is very similar language to what you first reviewed back in March, trying to, at that point in time, make a decision as to whether you were going to go for a June referendum or a November referendum. The decision was made for a November referendum. Also in March, the city had paid for, under the engineered assessment, the updated cost estimates, so we went from 40 to 42.5 million. So the referendum language was updated to reflect that. In your financial statement, Aaron McMahon, our treasurer, reaffirmed all of these, the bonds now outstanding and unpaid, 121,823. That's a very large number, but a large portion of that is the school debt service for which over 90% of that is being paid for by the state. Interest to be repaid on outstanding bonds is 30,552. Again, state is paying the majority of that. The additional bonds authorized but not yet issued, there's $1 million there. So two, if not three years ago, a million dollar bond was passed to address the Boiler House at the International Woolen Mill location, often, just often Pioneer. That bond has never been exercised, so that bond has not been issued, yet we still have to carry that on our books. So it's just, as a little bit of a side, I was discussing this with our treasurer, Aaron McMahon, have never been in the situation before where I would like to go to the council and ask them, once we get the Boiler House down, because we've been awarded a $5 million federal grant to address that. So in all likelihood, we'll never have to exercise this. I've not been through the process of how you take that back off because it was a voter-approved referendum that put that on the books. If we don't need it, I don't want to keep carrying that on the books as though, right? So I will find out in the future how that, that takes, takes place because I have not ever had to undo a bond before. There. So the, the new bond for the fire station is the $42.5 million. It has an estimated potential new interest of 31,419 because it's a 30-year bond and that's the projection that the main bond bank is giving us at this point in time. So the total additional bonds to be issued and estimated interest thereof, if approved by the voters, is the 74,919,873. That's what the fiscal impact statement has been calculated on for the voters. It's being propagated out there for voter information. This language, as you see here today, has been approved by our legal council, which is also our bond council. We're actually two weeks ahead of schedule because you're going to see this again in two weeks for when the city clerk brings forward the ballots for you to authorize to go to the election, but this is the wording that you'll see in there at that point in time. So seeking your approval on this, again, this states the, this supports the referendum that will be held on November 5th. This is the required bond statement that must go in, in for the ballot.
Thank you. We're going to do a motion, then a second, and then a discussion. So can I have a motion, please? Ann?
I'd like a me, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolve to send the referendum vote for the November 5th, 2024 election as presented.
Thank you. Pete?
I'd like to second that.
Thank you. And now a discussion. Maura?
I have a couple of questions and it's a lot to put it on the record, Steve, if you don't mind. I've had some people ask me some questions. So the, plus any additional premium, there's a concern that that would just cause an increase in the 42.5 million and that's part of, it says 42.5 million plus any additional premium. Can you explain the language and if it's part of a normal bond issuance?
The, the, any additional premium goes to, we're using estimates right now, so we're using the main bond bank. And let me speak to that for a moment. When we, when we looked at doing the high school at 110-plus million dollars, the city, our city, because we carry such a low amount of debt service, we've never gone out for individual bond ratings. So we did a financial analysis at that point of time based upon the 110 million. Was it advantageous for us to go out for individual, get our own individual bond rating and have a specifically separate issuance on the bond? What we found in that analysis was that it was not in our favor because it didn't produce enough results as far as lowering the cost of the bond. It also came with additional administrative costs that we would hire on an annual basis because we don't have the in-house capacity to carry that bond as a standalone on our own. So the main municipal bond bank does that as a package. So we made the decision back then that it was more advantageous to stay that for something that's a third of that. It definitely is better to stay with the main municipal bond bank that takes care of the annual reporting and all of that is built into the cost of the issuance and the bond itself. So the best analysis that we can give you is, this is calculated as of the tail end of last week. The bond bank issues a calculator that is day and time-specific, that when you open that calculator up and you put, you put your information in, the $42.5 million, it gives you their best-case estimate as to what those interest rates are going to be over the life of that bond. And that's what the analysis is built on.
Okay.
So it gets, it gets into not knowing specifically. It could be much lower than this because hopefully.
Maybe there'll be competitive bidding?
The bond, the rate is coming down, I'm hoping, so knocking on wood. It could be less than that, but if the interest rate over the 30 years goes up significantly, that's what that language covers for us.
So as you're discovering what to do with your million-dollar bond, so if we get the, say we get $10 million in a federal grant.
Right.
I think there's also, you know, people saying, well, they're just going to add that $10 million into the cost of the fire stations. And I say to them, I said, you know, that's the job of the council to make sure that we, the promises we made are the promises we keep. But at the same time, you know, some assurances through this process is also good, that's why the conversation. And so how do you foresee, like, how, how would that work in the process, given that we don't know how to give back 1 million? Or what if we don't use the 1 million? How does that work? Because we're going to have approval to go for 42.5 million, but we might only have to go for 32.5 million.
Right, you can always borrow less.
Okay.
But you can't borrow more than what the voters give you authorization for.
Okay, and it's our intention to hopefully borrow less. We are, we have a very strong possibility that we will have to borrow less.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And the other important point about all of that is until we have an affirmative vote approving the project, we can't apply for any of the grant funding that's, that's potentially available to us.
And I explain that to people when I talk to them, but I think, yeah, there's always fears.
Yeah, I think one of our local neighbors, Lebanon, is the prime example of that. They have, their voters have turned their project down on more than one occasion. They continue to look for and apply for and seek grant funding to go towards that project, but they can't obtain it because they don't have an approved project.
Ann?
So I understand that this is the legal referendum information, but to the average citizen, if they hadn't heard about the fire station improvements until they actually arrive at the voting booth, are we able to provide informational pamphlets like we will be presenting and have been presenting between now and that time so that if there are those folks, they can see that average annual impact and information about the stations at voting locations? I know there's very strict rules on what we can and can't do at a voting location.
I don't, I don't think so. I can ask the question. I don't, I don't think so. That's, that's why the bond language is what that is. That has to be posted there and has to be on, on the ballot, but.
So it's really about being educated prior to.
Prior to, yes.
Thank you.
Any other question? Jonathan?
Steve, just a clarifying question. Well, actually two. So the 42.5 is what we expect the two stations to cost, right?
That's, that's the engineered assessment as, as we know it today, yes.
Okay. And then the 31.4 is the interest on that, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then just for the sake of people watching, what kind of controls are in place to try to keep that 42.5 from kind of exploding into more? Is it just where, because we're capped at that? Or are there some engineering controls that are, you know, we've got quotes for different things as part of that project that are, that have a certain lifespan?
So you're asking the voters to authorize your project at $42.5 million and you're asking them to authorize you to borrow up to that amount? And this is the financial statement that supports that. That's your project cost there.
Okay.
So you, I hate to use the word value engineer, but we value and engineered this down by 12% already. So you, you'd have to cut some corners, you'd have to make some other amendments in order to get the project to come in at that rate. So the, the estimate, again, you know, we paid additional fun, funds to redo that estimate as of last March and, and to produce the escalators. So that, you know, we know the difference between a June referendum versus a November referendum, those costs, and that's what, what those costs are. And how those are compiled is the, the WBRC went to a specific company that this, this is all they do is put the engineered estimate. So the building is designed, materials listed and everything else with all of the subspecialties that are going to be needed. The professional company that's producing these estimates that we're using gathers all of the data nationally, but more importantly, regionally, so they know what the plumbing was going to cost, you know, the hourly labor rates and the material cost based upon actual projects that are being constructed. Those numbers are brought in and fed into their database. That's what produces this number. So we can't get any more accurate than that. This isn't, you know, a swag by any stretch. These are engineered numbers and that's, that's where the $2.6 million per year escalator came from as well, is from those known, best-known numbers.
Okay, yeah, I think there's just, you know, I've heard some concerns around, okay, well, we approve this and then it ends up costing 56 or something. So there'll be some going back to the table, but I'm hoping we don't have to do that. Alright, thank you.
Ann, did you have a question?
Well, I was just going to share really briefly that several of us here were part of the school building committee or committees, there was the high school and the elementary building projects, and we experienced that need to, and again, we hate to use value engineering, but to value engineer and or simply decide certain things that didn't make the cut when there were costs increased and we were limited to certain approved amounts. So it would be really the burden of the council at that point to make some tough decisions and do what had to be done to make those cuts.
Okay, thank you.
There was a lot of those tough decisions through that entire construction process with the high school. So the voters got what they, what they approved, but there was a lot of tough decisions that got us to, you know, from that, that overall number to the end product was, was very difficult.
Okay, we had a first and a second. All those in favor? No one's opposed? The person who's sitting in our audience, I would hate to have your thing being last. Which one are you here for?
I knew it.
Okay, do I have permission to move 24? Yes. So, okay, we're going to move that one up. Okay, in order to approve closure of Shaw's Road from Spur Road to Shaw's Ridge Road for Sanford Soccer Tournament from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM daily on 10/12/24 through 10/14/24. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Move, second.
Second. All those in favor? You may go. Okay. Alright, now back up to the top here. In order to award a consulting contract for the previously approved Planning Partnership Initiative between Maine DOT and the city of Sanford for the study of pedestrian and multimodal connectivity in South Sanford, predominantly surrounded the roundabout at Routes 9, 109 and 4. And Matt, I have a feeling this is you.
That's correct, thank you. So tonight, I'm here with the subject's proposal from James W. Sewell Company, who is the highest rated overall scorer responding to the South Sanford Planning Partnership Initiative with Maine DOT. This did take some time to develop. Once the highest score was identified as their scope was a little bit beyond what we had envisioned. So with some discussion on reduction of scope, notably, they were proposing to do a full traffic study. This Planning Partnership Initiative is just looking at essentially pedestrian and multimodal. So because there were no proposed changes to the geometrics of the road or the capacity of the road, we were able to remove that from the scope and thus get the budget back down to where it was originally envisioned. So I have been in touch with Diane Morabito, who is a renowned traffic engineer in Southern Maine, and we're very happy to support their proposal moving forward. Some of the aspects of the South Sanford Planning Partnership Initiative will look at pedestrian and multimodal connectivity surrounding, in and around the roundabout of Routes 109 and 4. It will also talk about or examine trail connectivity through the Trails Committee and the Parks and Recreation Department as the trail heads out to Route 4 and notably crosses onto Route 4 with the proposed Powers Bridge replacement and future trail connectivity headed further east as the Trails Master Plan envisions future connection to the eastern trail. It will also look at potential connection to the high school as well as address a lot of the residential and commercial expansion that we've found to be happening down in that area. So this partnership initiative will be working with Maine DOT in order to come up with a plan so that it can guide our future investment down there as well as help guide future residential and commercial development. And I think there is currently one proposal that's a traffic movement permit on Patriots Lane that may be tied into this as well, where they're looking, Maine DOT is looking to do some mitigation associated with additional development down there.
Thank you. Can I have a motion in a second and then we'll discuss this? Bob?
Still moved.
And a second.
Second.
Alright, any discussion or questions for? Nothing? Alright, all those in favor? There we go. We're set. In order to implement a municipal contract prequalification, I am losing it tonight, process as advertised by Maine DOT Local Project Administration Guidelines to supplement the city's. Guidelines to supplement the city's purchasing policy. And I think this is probably you again, Matt.
The next one is me as well. So, as part of our local project administration recertification training that we did this spring with Maine Department of Transportation, Maine DOT made us aware that just our current prequalification process where we, you know, for excavators and pavers, just have them basically sign our standards, did not meet their, you know, standards. They offered a template for which we basically changed Maine DOT for City of Sanford and gave the department a mechanism whereby we can find contractors prequalified for work within the city. And if they somehow fall short of standards, reliably and effectively notify them where they fall in short, how they can go about making corrective action, but also hold people to a common set of standards. Notably, you know, we have a few contractors in, in the city that we have longstanding relationships with because they're providing the best quality products that we're trying to, you know, foster that environment. We pay good money for good work. We pay good people good money for good work. So, the document in front of you for consideration tonight is, is basically that altered Maine DOT document whereby the city would have a formalized process on prequalifying contractors. This is predominantly through the capital improvement program, Broadway Capitals Improvement Program, and our operations and maintenance programs. And, and we would have a contractor fill out that application. It would be vetted by the Department of Public Works, and then it would come to the council with our recommendation. And so, those, those prequalified contractors would be evaluated and ultimately approved by the council. They would be up annually for recertification, but they would not have to complete, you know, the arduous application on an annual basis. They would just basically need to note, notify of us of any significant changes in their organizational structure or if they'd had a, you know, significant occurrences in the last year that would potentially be, you know, harmful to their status. And, and all of those are curable, by the way, like this. If, there's nothing in here that says, you know, if you make a mistake, you're off the list. We're looking for the contractors to make mistakes, own up to them, address them, and establish, you know, those engineering controls to make sure they don't happen again.
Thank you very much. Again, can we have a motion, a second, and then we'll discuss this?
I'll make a motion to approve.
And a second?
I'll second.
Jonathan? Okay. Jonathan, you must have a question.
Yes, thank you. I have a question. So, this, this list, at least to my untrained in this sort of area eyes, looks pretty, pretty expansive. Is there an expectation that, I see there is, it says it doesn't necessarily need to be all the areas, but is there sort of this expectation in this to have companies that are big enough to handle all, all or most of these for any particular project? Or will this kind of be split up depending on what's going on? Because, I mean, you know, not everybody's going to be great in roundabout design, but most of the time, we're not dealing with those. So, I just want to make sure we're not limiting the companies that apply or give us quotes and minimizing competition, which does help us with pricing. So, I don't know if you have any comments on that, but I think that, that's my biggest question.
Yeah. So, currently, the purchasing policy, the way it's set up right now, if we were to get three quotes, unfortunately, sometimes results in the lack of competition instead of fostering competition. Imagine you're a company that does a good job and has a great product, but you happen to be, you know, middle to high range on price. The current iteration of the purchasing policy, we might be going with that low bidder every time. So, imagine, you know, you're that contractor who is not getting that work after, you know, continuously bidding on it. After two or three times of, of bidding on this work, the contractors we've had that experience with start to la, lose interest in, in actually bidding on it. So, having the ability to prequalify contractors and, and not only select contractors on, on price, but, but quality, schedule and availability actually helps foster a more even environment and, and spreads that work around a little bit better and fosters more professional development and more, you know, professional contractors within the community.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Anne?
Madam Mayor, I, if, Councilor Martel, was your question actually related to Section Two qualifications, that they had to actually be qualified for each of those separate items? I thought that's what you were asking.
Um, well, there is a caveat in here saying it doesn't necessarily need to be prequalified in all the areas, but, um, yeah, I just wanted to make sure we weren't, like, excluding a lot of contractors.
Because we had talked about this at Subcommittee, so it's not limited to, that's not the case. I just want to make sure, Matt, correct. Like, they, they don't have to be qualified under each of those items. It's just one item they could qualify under.
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Maura?
Just, you know, when we first started this conversation, it was really about trying to establish something that had equity. So, everybody's playing, everybody has to provide the same information to get qualified in their chosen profession or the products they provide. It's, the idea is to provide equity, and it's actually local contractors who asked for this. So, to have something that they can look at, know that they're meeting the standards, and if they're meeting the standards, then they can bid on projects and they can be satisfied and feel good about the fact that they will be asked to do these projects because they've met those requirements.
Yeah, I think conceptually, this is a great idea. I just wanted a little clarification around the implementation. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. Thank you, Maura. Diane Conley, I believe your hand is up.
Yeah, I have a question about when the contractors bid for the projects and they get okayed, and then they subcontract to another company. How is that being addressed? In regards to, like, paving or construction on a road, let's say River Street, let's say Company A gets the contract, and then they sublet to Company B. How does that work?
So, subcontractors are typically handled at the kickoff meeting for preconstruction. At the preconstruction meeting, the general contractor is expected to submit a list of subcontractors. The general would be subject to the contractor prequalification, but I don't think the subcontractors would. But the performance of the subcontractor would be reflected back on the general, is, is my understanding on how it works. So, if there was a subcontractor underperforming, that would unfortunately reflect negatively on the, the general contractor.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any more questions from the council? All right. All, we have a first and a second. So, all those in favor? Thank you very much.
I, I did forget to add one more thing, and I think this was a very prominent point of this whole exercise, is that with the raised grant coming in, you know, I, I think it behooves Sanford to capture as much of that work through local contractors as possible. And by having a Maine DOT prequalified contractors' process approved, we can potentially try to capture more of those local dollars for our local companies.
Thank you. That's a very good point. So, thank you for remembering that. All right. All right. In order to accept the resignation of Jacob Cosby, pardon? Yes, we already did. We already voted. In order to accept the resignation... Am I missing something? Oh, okay. A resolve to adopt a local policy regarding public safety per recommended by the Federal Highway Administration SS4A Grant Program as presented. And is this Matt again? This is your night, Matt.
Madam Mayor, don't you feel like his agenda items are always the most complicated to say?
They are.
I think so. Can you work on that for us, Matt?
I think you're just testing me personally. So, go ahead, Matt.
Thank you. So, we've worked through the Safe Streets and Roads for All Safety Action Plan with our consultant. We've conducted a lot of community outreach. We've held public hearings, and the council has adopted a safety action plan. In order to move on to the next step of applying for a demonstration grant, the Federal Highway Administration also requires that the city adopt a policy regarding safe streets and roads for all. So, I'll read the policy statement that is for consideration for you tonight, which is the city of Sanford recognizes that even one traffic-related serious injury or fatality is too many. Therefore, given the resources available, the cities, the Sanford City Council commits to a goal of reducing or eliminating said accidents for all road users, including people walking, biking, using transit and driving by January first of 2028 in accordance with the Sanford Safe Streets and Roads for All SS4A Action Plan. Reduction or elimination of serious injuries and fatalities shall be guided through the Sanford SS4A Safety Action Plan as discussed and overseen on a monthly basis by the Public Safety Subcommittee of the Sanford City Council. The meetings are open to the public for equitable engagement and shall aim for routine participation from all stakeholders. So, essentially, the city is trying to set a goal which coincides with the end of the study of reduce, reducing or eliminating serious and fatal accidents and crashes. Is that to say that we will be a hundred percent successful on our goal? No, but the SS4A Action Plan has milestones and recommendations on, on things that we might do to increase safety. So, and, and one of those is this, is a demonstration grant that has been before you as well to talk about how we can change our proposed traffic signals to adaptive control and pursue a demonstration grant funding through federal highway.
So, when we, our, our motion, if somebody makes a motion, will be for, excuse me, the policy?
Correct.
Okay. So, everybody's clear on that. Anne?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a local policy regarding public safety per recommendation by the Federal Highway Administration SS4A Grant Program.
Thank you. Nate?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions on this? Jonathan?
Um, I was just wondering if you could comment on the estimates of costing and what those would be going for? I know we've been implementing some, some newer streetlights, so I don't know if maybe this is part of it, but if you could comment on the cost.
Oh, we lost the voice, Matt.
You're muted. Thank you.
Thank you. So, the Maine Department of Transportation, again, in conjunction with the Federal Highway Administration, has been reconstructing thirteen sets of traffic signals within Sanford and Springville this year. That effort is basically installing advanced traffic control hardware into our, our signals. The hardware is smart enough that if it can, if it can detect, say, a slug of traffic coming from a certain direction, it can accelerate its cycles in order to try to address the slug of traffic. But if it doesn't have mid-block sensors or long-range sensors associated with the traffic signals, it can't detect that traffic. It really can only detect, you know, as far as the eye can see at the, at the intersection. What the proposal, the demonstration grant proposal proposes is that we install mid-block sensors on the Route one-oh-nine corridor between the roundabout and Lebanon Street along Route one-oh-nine and take six of those traffic signals and upgrade them. It would use the existing hardware, but we would get a software license for adaptive control, which is essentially a learning artificial intelligence traffic signals where it could sense that traffic ahead of time and start making decisions, changing phases, and perhaps, you know, making those best decisions in order to accommodate better traffic flow. According to our consultant, that can result in up to twelve percent more arrivals on green for those who are going up the corridor at the speed limit. It can, oh, and to kind of assuage concerns on the artificial intelligence, we would also go under contract with a consultant such as ours to have somebody monitoring the performance of those signals constantly. That's something that Maine DOT has done through the build grant, but only at three locations, two of which are in Augusta and one are in Waterville. So, I'll get to the cost breakdown in, in just a moment. To supplement this adaptive control signal technology, we are also proposing to partner with the Sanford Police Department, who currently has grant funding through the Maine Bureau of Highway Safety to increase speed enforcement through the subject corridor. So, the Sanford Police Department intends on applying again for the speed enforcement grant, and they would also apply for and likely receive a pedestrian enforcement grant. So, again, it's that, that high priority corridor as identified by the SS4A Action Plan. In addition to that, the third, third component of the demonstration grant would be an informational campaign to the public where we would be sending out a direct mailer to everyone, and then four years of social media information pushing that message out, go the speed limit on Route one-oh-nine. You get more arrivals on green. So, let me break down the cost for you and, um, yes, thank you, Steve. So, the demonstration grant itself, the, the grant application at the bottom of the page, through the federal government, we would be applying for four-hundred-and-sixty-thousand, four-hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand-two-hundred dollars. It would be matched ultimately locally by a hundred-and-fifteen-thousand-eight-hundred dollars. And then the nineteen-thousand-eight-hundred-and-forty is the federal funding through the Maine Bureau of Highway Safety, and then the four-thousand-nine-hundred-and-sixty is the police department's match on the Maine Bureau of Highway Safety money. So, the total project cost would be six-hundred-and-three-thousand-eight-hundred dollars. And of that, the adaptive software upgrade subscription would be four years for those six signals, and the operations, maintenance and oversight would be four years as well. So, that's, that's kind of the bottom two lines of demonstration pilot activity number one. So, the total project cost for those would be seventy-two thousand for the software upgrade, and the operations, maintenance, oversight would be forty thousand. That's somebody who's watching the system. At the end of that four-year period, if the city chose to extend the program, we would be responsible for all those costs. If the city decided to sunset that program, we would go back to where we were before with the advanced traffic control. One of the advantages of doing what we're proposing on doing is that Maine DOT has those adaptive signals, two in Augusta and one in Waterville, that are adaptive. Others are just the advanced. Maine DOT currently doesn't have a system that's going from advanced to adaptive. So, this also has the potential of illustrating the benefits of going from advanced to adaptive and seeing how many, you know, how, how better, how much better the traffic will flow.
Uh, thank you. So, one additional question. So, after the four years, what would be the annual cost for maintaining the system?
Yes. So, that would be, uh, let me just grab my calculator. The annual cost, so it's that seventy-two thousand for four years, plus the forty thousand of oversight for four years. Gets you a hundred-and-twelve thousand, but then divide by four, so the annual cost would be twenty-eight thousand dollars.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anne?
I was just gonna, two things. One, can we include the worksheet from the Public Safety Subcommittee meeting that Steve just shared in the minutes for folks in case they want to reference it? And then, one point of just clarification, so folks know, because I, we didn't realize it immediately at Subcommittee, the one-fifteen City of Sanford match is over four years, so it's twenty-eight-nine-fifty per year. That made it felt different to me than at one lump sum.
Yeah, I agree. Any other questions?
Can I make a, oh, go ahead.
All right. Want a clarification on that? The, the first four items, the fifty-four-thousand, eighteen-thousand, ten-thousand and ten-thousand, that would be for the design and construction. So, that, that would be in the first year.
Okay. So, just, I'll make an opinion on this for myself. So, while I'm all in support of improving safety in Sanford, I know that the next few years are gonna be pretty budget tight. So, I don't, I don't think I can support any significant expenses at this point. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Maura?
Are we just approving the policy tonight? So?
Correct.
Correct. There's no, there's no monetary connection to the policy. This is a, we have to have the policy in place to seek grants and opportunities like this.
Okay. So, we wouldn't be committing to any financials at this point?
No, it's the policy tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I guess, I want to be clear about that, too. So, the, the deadline for the grant application is August 29th. So, if we were to apply for the grant, you know, we don't have to sign for it, I guess, if we ultimately decide no, but.
Well, that's one person speaking, but we're just trying to clarify that it's just the policy he's voting for tonight, but when the grant comes forward, that would be a different discussion. Some of us do support it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other? Go ahead, Steve.
So, Matt, you've had way too much screen time tonight, a long, long, boring thing. So, when I always say, you know, there ain't no free money, this is Matt giving us free money. This is the cost of the free money. So, I just have to shout out, you know, the, the planning and engineering that's gone into the SS4A, this second PPI, all of those components that we've envisioned for a long period of time now, the construction of Sanford Net Fiber, implementation of LED streetlights that allow for these sensors to be plugged in mid-block. All of those were conceptual at one point in time. Now you're seeing we're pulling the trigger on that, and it's bringing more, more money into us. So, I can appreciate the perspective that, you know, there's an increased cost with this, but it's very cost-effective from the perspective of it's, it's, for Matt, tonight it's about safety. It's also about increasing the mobility within that corridor. You can get more cars through the same width and the same street by using technology as opposed to, you know, millions and millions of dollars trying to widen a street or do other intersection improvements. So, we're taking a technology approach. The Build, the Build Grant from, geez, I don't know, seven, almost seven years ago, got us the streetlights with a certain level of technology. In that period of time, we built the fiber network, all in anticipation for the other sensors. We're able to pull the trigger on that now. So, I appreciate that there is an, an increased annual cost in the future, but that's a small, a small cost in comparison to the benefits that we anticipate out of this. If, over this pilot period of time, you find that there's not that value in it, you as a council could pull that back out and not incur those costs beyond the program period, because this is a pilot program. If you don't find the value there, which I believe that you will, you can, you can pull this back.
Ann?
Just a follow-up question. Is this eligible CIP fund use for the demonstration grant piece at least? Not the ongoing annual, but, so, you know, we just approved $400,000, I mean, I think there are CIP funds to make this happen without impacting the general budget. But again, to Maura's point, we'll determine that later, but.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, we had a first and a second. All those in favor with the policy? Thank you very much. All right, now, we'll move on to what I tried to get past you before. In order to accept the resignation of Jacob Cosby from the Board of Appeals with regret, but it's because he's moving, so, can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to accept with regret and hope that his future is bright wherever he's gone.
Thank you. Can I have a second? Ann?
And I'll second that.
And I imagine there's probably no questions on this one. So, all those in favor? Thank you very much. And the second one, in order to accept the resignation of Mark Patterson from the Board of Appeals and the Fire Station Work Group effective August 31, 2024, and this is definitely with regret. Also, he's been helping us tremendously. So, may I have a motion? Maura?
I'd like to make a motion again with regret. I served on the Charter Committee in 2002 with Mr. Patterson, and he's done a lot of volunteering for the community, so I wish him well in retirement.
Ann?
And I'll second that.
And, again, moving. So, all those in favor? Thank you very much. In order to authorize the City of Sanford Fire Department to accept assistance to the firefighter grant, AFG, grant funds in the amount of $422,727.27, and fund the purchase of a new ambulance. So, is, Steve, are you doing this? Is Scott here?
I am, yes. So, Chief Susie is, is away this week. AC Watkins is away on training, and AC Smith was, was unavailable this evening. So, tag, I omit. So, wish I could take credit for all of this, but I cannot. So, the city has been awarded a grant in the amount of $422,727. Our match on that is the $42,272. We have $100,000 in the CIP this year because in anticipate, we were anticipating just ordering the chassis this year until this grant award came through to us. So, it was awarded to the department in recognition for the extreme increase in volume that the department is experiencing. I would ask you to accept the grant this evening. There is a dialogue to be had with the chief. He envisions this to not replace one of our three, but to be a fourth ambulance. So, you don't have to make that decision tonight, but I would ask you to accept the grant. The total amount on this is, it's a $450,000 anticipated purchase of a full ambulance. That's a new rolling chassis, full cab, that's a striker cot, an electric striker cot, that's a 12-lead Zoll defibrillator, and other ancillary equipment and supplies that go, I can remember when that was $180,000, and now it's $450,000, right? So, yeah, thus the gray hair, I guess. But, so I'd ask you to accept this this evening, and then the future discussion will be around, you know, if this is replacing one of our current three ambulances, or if it comes on as a fourth. The chief has volume data to share with you on that. Several regards, you'll see it in the narrative in here as well. They're spending more, what we call more time out of the barn now. So, we don't, we no longer get to just haul patients to Goodall, the Goodall campus, and drop them. Pursuant to the consolidation under Maine Health, medical directors are moving our patients to different locations dependent upon what the acuity is and what they're experiencing. So, because we're critical care, paramedic-trained, taking a lot of those patients directly to Portland that have cardiovascular issues and such and to that, because we have the medical capabilities of doing that transport, rather than having them packaged in, at Goodall, and then relocated onto another unit, and then ultimately transported to Portland, we're doing those. So, you go from an average run of 30 minutes to an average run of 90 minutes on one of those particular occurrences. The other aspect that I've asked the chief, and he's keeping numbers on this now, is there, there's many occasions now that we have all three of our ambulances out, and we're calling for mutual aid to do ambulance transports within our community, because all three of ours are dispersed at once. So, we're keeping track of those numbers as well, and this ambulance would be in support of having our fourth ambulance being out there manned at the critical care level as opposed to BLS level as would be provided from surrounding ambulance services to us. So, if you could, for this evening, I would ask you to vote in support of receiving this AFG grant. I do have a list here. I know the time is too short here this evening, but it's almost mind-boggling to see what else they have in the pipeline out here for various funds that they've asked for. So, this is the first.
Can I have a motion, please, and a second? Maura?
I'll make a motion to accept.
Ann?
I'll second that.
All right. Any questions, Ann?
One quick question, Steve, and I know we're gonna talk about this later, but if we were to keep four ambulances in use, would that require an increase in staff to have four out at one time?
No, they're, they're achieving that now. The other thing that I'd like the chief to share with you, when you look at the shift roster now, it's very gratifying to see the amount of paramedics that we have, which went to our new licensure for, for increased funding. So, no. They do have, AFG, they have a safer grant sitting out there for six paramedic positions, fully funded for three years with no clawback. So, at the end of the three-year period, you don't have to retain them. You could, you could release them, or if they're not replaced in that period of time, that, that would be that. If, if we are successful, and we apply for those as paramedics, right? So, thus, thus, we've learned over the last number of years when we weren't successful in getting the firefighter grants and whatnot, shifted to EMS, so the ambulance, right? Shift that application for what was four positions to now six positions for EMS, because there's a, there's a national focus now on the emergency medical services. So, if successful, two of those positions would go to rounding out the 13 per shift, right? So, that would get you to 13 for all four shifts for the first time. Two, two, two of those, no, and then the other four positions, I'm shifting away from community paramedicine. That's a whole separate realm under. So, the other four would be in there to fully staff the fourth ambulance by having that additional paramedic per shift.
Thank you. And then the only other thing, have we actually heard about the ER closing in the near future? Because I thought that they confirmed that they were not closing.
Well, that was in the, was it AC Watkins that wrote the narrative?
Chief Susie's letter says they're closing, and I don't want this community to panic if they want to.
I would, I would not propagate that. I sit on the Finance Committee for Southern Maine Healthcare and Maine Med combined. Pursuant to the last consolidation that they just went through, the certificate of need that was approved for that consolidation was specific to non-closure of emergency services. So, I would, I would not see that in the near future.
So, the community doesn't need to panic if they read that in the letter?
Right, right. Otherwise, they'd be in violation of the certificate of need that got them to the level of consolidation that they're at now.
Any other question, Jonathan?
Just a couple things. I noticed there's a, around a $42,000 match that we need to complete the sale. Are there any other expenses around that that we would expect to see for that ambulance?
No, because that, that's an inclusive purchase. It's, it's the equipment as well. The striker cot that would go in there, the electric lift striker cot, the 12-lead Zoll defibrillator. Shame me for not being able to think of it, but the thumper.
Defibrillator?
The thumper, right. It's gonna, gonna do your CPR.
Very technical.
Oh, the CPR thing, yeah.
Only understand.
I still use the term out of the barn, but it's the thumper, right? The chest thumper that does the compressions.
Oh, sorry. And then this probably will roll into the next budget discussion, but I recall there being some discussion around increasing our reimbursement rates for EMS services. Is that something that has started to roll in yet, or is that?
They, they achieved the new licensure level. That was months later than it should have been, but that's, that's at the fault of the state, and we had to cry foul on that at the state level in order to get that licensure changed more timely. So, that, that has been implemented, yes. And we are also hopeful that in the next legislative session, you will see them setting rates here under Maine Care as well as CMS federally for community paramedicine. We also are actively talking with both Northern Light as well as Maine Health on funding two positions of community paramedicine. So, we're holding off until we can put the funding mechanism in place before coming back to the City Council to ask for implementing those two positions.
Thank you.
All right. All those in favor? Thank you. In order to authorize pedestrian use of the sidewalks and shoulders along Main Street, Route 109, and Heidi Street between 8:15 a.m. and 9:30 a.m. on Saturday, August 31, 2024, to accommodate participants in the Randall's Run Walk for the Jim 5K Race with police presence for traffic control. Can I have a motion, please? Nate?
So, move, Madam Mayor?
Thank you. And a second. Nate, excuse me. Nate already did it. Jonathan?
I'll second that.
All right. Any questions? How many you, my question is, how many are you gonna participate?
Well, Emily might make us.
If DC Small will run, I'll run.
I'll walk.
I think that's a no.
He runs, doesn't he?
Okay. All those in favor? Thank you very much. And now for council member comments. Any comments from Ann?
And I, I know we're out of time, so I do apologize, but if I could just do a quick poll of the council for a fun reason, who has ever sang a song in the shower?
Who's ever what?
Who's ever sung a song in the shower?
In the shower?
See, I have pre, I have pre.
I have pre-knowledge. I have pre-knowledge.
Okay, raise your hand. Okay. Have you ever sung, have you ever sung a song in the car? Have you ever sung a song in the car, Councilor Stuckpole?
Song in the car?
Yeah, all right.
Okay, I am really nervous now, because she's always got something.
And, and who would love to send 1,400 backpacks filled with food to Sanford children?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
So, what's really exciting is we have an opportunity as a council on October 19th, which is a Saturday, to partake in the funnest new fundraiser coming up for the Sanford Backpack Program. It will be a lip sync contest. No actual singing talent involved. There may be costumes, there may be costume changes. My daughter has volunteered to do a mashup of songs for us. So, think "We Built This City," think, and I forget the rest of them. She's got an amazing mashup. And we're gonna challenge, if, if the rest of the council, and you can think about it, will agree, or at least a majority of us will do it, we're gonna challenge the school committee. And then we'll let the attendees, hopefully 1,000 attendees in the Sanford Performing Arts Center, decide who wins between the school committee and the Sanford City Council in a lip sync contest. And then I want to extend this, DC Small, you know what's coming. Because wouldn't it be fabulous if the Sanford Fire Department and EMS Department competed against the Sanford Police Department in also a lip, a lip sync battle? Wouldn't that be amazing?
You could wear those socks again.
So, I'm just floating that out there for fun. I will follow up with some official communications and invitations, but I'm really hoping folks in the community get excited. Mark your calendars, October 19th, we have a really fun lineup. We have some really fun participants. Ms. Beth Laternos promised to be part of the show. So, folks that know our guidance counselor at the high school will be excited about that. So, anyway, thank you.
All right. Good to know. Any other comments? Jonathan?
The Acton Fair is going on this coming weekend, so I'll be out wandering around at some point. So, hopefully we'll see people there. Usually good turnout and a fun time, so hopefully the folk can go.
Good. Chicken livers. Isn't it the Rotarians do the chicken livers? Yeah. All right. Keep moving right along so we can get back into our other meeting. Any future agenda items that we need? Bob?
Yeah, I just, I want to discuss, well, first of all, I need to ask a question. Is there a deadline for things to be included in the packet? I'm thinking specifically of some of these letters that we received late for our meetings. If they want to be in the packet, my opinion is it should have the same deadline as all the other information so it goes out in the packet. That doesn't mean people can't email us as counselors whenever they want to. It's just if they want their email as part of the packet, it needs to be in by a certain deadline. I'm, I'm not, you know, I think it needs to be discussed what that deadline is. I'm suggesting it's the same deadline as everything else that goes into the packet. I don't want to inconvenience anybody, but it's as simple as I get an email, I send it to Larissa, I ask her to please include it in the packet, and if it's there by packet deadline, it gets there. If it doesn't, then I think, I don't know whether, if there's an exception or what, that would be up to the council what we would want to do. But I, I just think we need something hard and fast and say, is it there or isn't it there? And stop the, I'm not saying anything inappropriate was done, but stop the, when did you get it? Who sent it? it, who sent it, what time did you get it, all that other kind of stuff around letters that are sent that people want included in the, in the meeting. So that's, that's my suggestion.
That would make it a lot easier on me, because then there would be a definite...
Yeah, yeah. And I think, as always, we do a lot of education around that, you know, and say, if you want to write a councilman, or the mayor, or just in general to the council on a particular issue, then it needs to be done and it needs to be received by a certain deadline, noon on Friday or something, to give Larissa an opportunity to collate it and put it in.
It does say something in our introduction, introduction about that. I'm trying to find it.
Well, it's okay, we don't need to take up time now doing it, it's just occurs to me that it's something that would be useful to us and to the community also.
We would have to, because then it would change, because members of the public may also submit comments via City of Sanford website. So it's right at our, so it doesn't have a time limit on there.
Right, but what I'm saying is...
So we'd have to do that.
Inclusion in the packet, that's what I'm saying. I'm not, I'm not, this is not a freedom of speech issue. People can email, people can email me during a meeting, I'm not gonna read it, okay, because that's not appropriate. But they can email me during a meeting, they can text me during, they can text me whenever they want to, email me whenever they want to.
Okay.
But if they want their comments to be included in the packet, my suggestion is that there is a hard and fast deadline for that.
So we don't have anything right now that we know of?
Well, we put out for the packet, you need to get your, all departments and everybody else needs to get their information to us the Wednesday before.
So we'd have to do that for the public, somehow we have to publish that, so they would...
But hang on to that thought. So then that's compiled Wednesday afternoon, Larissa and I go over the agenda, we meet with the mayors on Thursday mornings, decide what, finalize that, and then the packet is finalized and pushed out and published on Fridays, right, for the following Tuesday. So that's the packet, right? We're also talking about, so if there's a public hearing, like on a Tuesday, somebody emails the day of communication about, you know, the public hearing information, and that gets right into the record, I mean, is that, that's different than being in the packet, I guess, right?
Yeah. Did you get that, Bob? That if somebody wanted to read it in, that would be different than being in the packet, but it would still be a part of our minutes? Okay. I don't know the difference.
The way I think about, the way I think about it is, if they want to write a letter, do we always include all the letters we get, or the emails we get, as part of the public hearing in our, in our meeting minutes? I mean, we put one person's letter as part of our meeting minutes. We had multiple emails on the issue, and it's kind of, you know, we shouldn't be picking and choosing, it should be, if you send in your comments...
It is making sure that they get to us.
Right. And we don't always read them in.
So we could add that to the agenda, so we could have a big discussion around it, and what that should look like?
Yeah.
Okay.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
And again, one final thing, if you want to have it at 5:00 on Tuesday, or 5:00 of the time, that's, that's fine with me, I'm just saying, I think we need, and then make it work so that it is part of the packet, so. That's what I'm saying. My suggestion was when the packet came together, but if that doesn't work, I'm open to other suggestions, so...
Okay, so we have a good discussion around it.
Can we do the discussion later? It's 8:30, we still have one more meeting to do. I know everybody wants to make comments on this, but we're gonna have a meeting about it later.
Okay. So Jonathan, do you have another thing for the agenda, or is...
No, I just wanted to make a comment. I think a lot of the stuff could just go in the minutes and then not have to go into the packet.
So we'll discuss it as a whole council and see how it fits in. Okay, good. I adjourn this meeting.